Still working on it?
No, I'll remember that for the next time.
I just didn't attach it for whatever reason. I don't know what I did.
Yeah.
What's that?
Facebook, Instagram.
Oh, I heard about it.
That's the news story today.
Yeah, I heard about it. They were joking around that, uh, kids were actually, they were joking around.
I know, I wasn't gonna believe you were not. You were gonna tell us some big story.
I didn't know it was down.
Get me overwhelmed by it.
It was down because, yeah.
But I mean, I think maybe it was.
This is the, I didn't, yeah.
Yeah, I forgot to attach it to the email apparently.
Well, that's okay. We just can't vote on it.
Well, that's what I said. I said, here, have my copy, but if you have questions, I'll just have to.
There's, there's not a whole lot, right?
No, it's mostly RMS and pass-through stuff, I think.
Yeah.
The biggest part of it.
Morning, Jason.
The weirdest thing. I never see faces like through the windows and the doors. And I was coming down the steps and I looked up through the door and there's the maintenance guy. He could do seeing if anybody's coming scared to. I'm not used to seeing faces, you know, in those little windows. I didn't mean to scare you because I didn't want to open the door. I heard somebody come.
You know what the price tag was?
Yeah.
But that includes all the gear and, I think it was pretty impressive.
Yeah, it includes all the gear, yeah.
Yeah, they take it a little easier here. That's not good. They'll hold it.
I know.
Your wife's gonna kill you.
I know. I thought I could get that if I just could. I gotta get a pair of socks.
Yeah, we have this, this is the one that I'm concerned about. Let me have the, that one here. I'll show him. That's what you like to look at.
Thank you.
You wanna raise those figures then?
Oh, this is the only copy we have.
Amen.
Yeah, sorry.
I apologize.
Can you, can you text? Can you text Brad and see if this, uh, Water and Sewer or the prison, it's thirty-two thousand one sixty-eight, if that's, what is that? That's a quarter?
That's for quarter, yeah.
That's a quarter? And, and what?
I bet that's probably.
How is that in comparison to other?
I'd have to look back because I know they did all those upgrades over there and it was supposed to cut their water. I'd have to look at an audit trail. Do you want me to go up and run it quick?
There it is. No, I'm not gonna even have you do it, but I'm gonna have to approve it. But that's not the point. The point is that we took, we spent a lot of money and taking measures to.
To lower that, yeah.
Right.
Okay, I'll look at it.
You're live.
We're, we are live. Um, I just don't have my.
You don't have computer screen?
Yeah, my computer's not working. Um, the director's gonna manage the comment from YouTube.
So, few any comments under public comments or questions? Pleasant on that. Okay. Since she doesn't have a screen on.
And one comment, Maya Toon can't be here. Um, she just wants you guys to know that as far as the bid openings go, that she'll be looking over those. So.
You want to announce that when we get to that?
You want me to do that? Okay.
Okay. You guys ready? Morning, we ask you to please rise for opening prayer and pledge allegiance.
Dear gracious and loving God, we open another month. May it be a chapter of the year that brings continued blessings and answer prayers to each one of us. The season of harvest is upon the farmers. May you provide them with good weather, health, and prosperity as they gather the fruits of their labors. Lord, we recognize this month as a time to bring awareness to the national disabilities employment. We thank you for each of these lives and your many talents that they share. Their lives help build businesses and communities throughout the nation. We pray they will inspire others to work together in inclusion so that all may prosper. Father, we also remember this week those that work in the juvenile justice system. We pray for those communities and victims of those crimes. Protect and guide law enforcement, juvenile probation officers, teachers, counselors, the courts, and others. Guide them as they teach the juvenile accountability and responsibility to make better choices. We pray that through their efforts, the juvenile will recognize that we want them to make better decisions that will help them to succeed. Lord, you instruct us to pray without ceasing. We continue to be diligent in prayer for our divided nation. Bring unity to us through your love. We know that hate and bitterness in its own form is its own form of total destruction. It'll rip the soul from any man or woman. Let us hear, listen, and be respectful of one another. Lead and grant us to be good stewards of your will. Guide us through this meeting this morning. These things we humbly pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. We convene the commissioners' public meeting at this time and ask for the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. All fair side? Aye. Aye, so carry. And then we'll have public comment on agenda items only at this time. Hearing none. Matt, you have anything?
Nope.
Okay, we'll move on. Thank you.
Bid openings with, uh, Krista Rogers.
Morning, Krista.
Morning. Do you need to read them? No, I can read this. Thank you. Uh, we had two bids this week. One was for floodplain housing remediation. We had one bidder, Elijah LLC. Their bid was in the amount of fifty-five thousand dollars. The other item was for food products and there were two bidders, Keyco Distributors Incorporated and Fisers, and these are multi-line bids used as needed.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. And is this where you want me to announce?
Yeah.
So Maya Toon is unable to be in the meeting today, but she wanted me to, um, acknowledge that she will be reviewing those when she gets back in the office.
Thank you.
Three point zero accounts payable cash requirements report with Randy Clemens.
Morning, Randy.
Good morning. I'm here to present the accounts payable cash requirement report for invoices due through October thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, to be paid on October sixth, twenty twenty-one in the amount of one million sixty-three thousand eight hundred ninety-one dollars and sixty-six cents.
Okay, any questions or comments on accounts payable?
Just to note that almost half of that is, uh, five hundred and one thousand is from RMS, which is, uh, revenue derived from the landfill, so it's not a general fund. And the general fund accounts for about thirty percent of today's payments.
And then only to make sure you get back with us on comparables. And I believe we put the system in maybe two years ago.
Eighteen, nineteen, something like that, yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll just check it so we, we don't see. Thank you, Randy.
Yep.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side? Aye. Aye, so carry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I just heard from the warden on the bill. And he said it's a little higher than this same quarter last year. So he's having his maintenance guys check into it just to see if there's any, you know, challenges or major inconsistencies with the, the amount of waters or.
Thanks, Matt.
TDA actions with Roxanne Rico.
Good morning, commissioners. Uh, in the courts, we are looking to replace one full-time executive secretary position at a pay grade five. Um, this is in Judge Lobecchio's courtroom. Um, the individual is leaving and we are requesting to replace that position with two part-time executive secretaries at pay grade five. They would be limited to a thousand hours annually and this would be for a period of November fourth, twenty twenty-one through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, so during that time then, we will not be paying a full-time employee pension or benefits.
Right, and until a new judge is elected and selects his own staff, we would be utilizing those part-time individuals.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on also to, in the courts, uh, the reclassification of one court scheduler at a pay grade six-seven to a scheduling technician at a pay grade five-six. The reclassification of one clerk three, pay grade four, to a scheduling technician, pay grade five-six. And also the reclassification of one clerk four, pay grade five, to an administrative specialist, pay grade five-six.
And this is a reorg in the court administrator's office, which will be savings of about, I believe, sixty-eight hundred dollars per year.
And they're doing this now because that position is vacant, the court scheduler.
Correct.
So they wanna, before they hire a person and then have to make changes.
I, I think there were some changes in, um, the preponderatory, um, working with the jurors. And the, um, court administration has taken over that responsibility.
Those duties from the preponderance office. So it's additional duties for those clerical staff.
Okay, and then moving on to the Department of Public Safety and Communications. Um, we're looking to reclassify telecommunicators into the following new categories in this, to be effective October seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. All new hires would be classified as a telecommunicator trainee at a pay grade six. They would advance to a telecommunicator one, which is a call taker. Um, that would also be at a pay grade six. Uh, they would advance to a telecommunicator two, being a call taker and radio operator at a pay grade seven. And the current supervisors, um, would now become telecommunicator threes, um, at their current pay grade eight.
Yeah, I'd like to make a couple of comments here. And that is, uh, under our current policy, we have, we had no call takers. Okay, so when, when a trainee would come in, uh, to the nine-one-one center, it, it's about a year process to have them pretty much qualified. And when we got, uh, down to eight, uh, people in DPS, nine-one-one, plus the two supervisors, it, it, it left, uh, left us in a critical state. Uh, it is FEMA correct that, uh, it gives us the regulations regarding the nine-one-one operators. And if they don't have certain, uh, knowledge or pass certain tests, uh, they, they can't, they can't, uh, answer the phones. And so imagine us having to implement our COVID policy if they had exposure. There'd be no one there that could legally answer the phone at times. So this is, this is something that we have to address. And by changing these advances, advancements, uh, from a new hire to a telecommunicator one, call taker, we will always have a call taker and that's, and that's critical. Now, the call taker may not have the ambition to wanna go, uh, become a, a telecommunicator two or even a telecommunicator three and are happy at that call-taking position. And, uh, that solves one of our major issues, especially over the pandemic. Uh, so I, I have no other comments on this other than I think, um, Hutch did what he needed to do to protect the citizens of this, this county and the nine-one-one center. And I believe only one of the steps is a, a reclassification where there's a pay grade increase, correct?
There would be, um, when, when they become a call taker, it would be a five percent increase. And they could stay at that position. If they moved to a telecommunicator two, it would be an additional five percent.
Okay, so it's two of the steps would be.
Right.
But it takes about a year to get to that, correct?
To a telecommunicator two, it would be, yeah, about a year's worth of training. But, you know, a call taker is very critical to the operation out there. And instead of releasing somebody that you've spent a couple months, three, four months training, uh, if they can be a call taker, that's critical to their operation.
Yeah.
The, the other thing that I like about this, and I hope that we can do it in some other places in the county, is it gives people a sense that they can go somewhere in their department. And, uh, they don't have to simply wait for the head of the department to, uh, resign or quit.
There's a tier system.
There's a tier system, there's a, there's a, some job growth if you're willing to take on the additional training, even to go from two to three, you need to take some supervisory training to learn how to supervise and stuff. So it, it gives people a sense of being able to come in and I, I hope that we can look at this and do this in some of the other departments because I think it would address what I've heard from some employees about feeling as though they, they want to be able to go somewhere. So I think that's a positive thing.
Absolutely.
And hopefully it'll help people wanna stay, stay too.
Commissioner, this is Beth on the line. May I, may I say something quick?
Yes, absolutely. Thanks for joining us.
Um, certainly. I appreciate you guys, um, you know, taking the effort and, and understanding what I'm saying about the call-taking position. Um, even if, over the years, a lot of people come in, do a lot of training, and then leave when they're not able to put the call-taking together with the radio. And that is what, you know, I propose the call-taker position for. Um, you know, maybe it's too soon for some people to be able to understand how to do the call-taking and put it together with the radio operation. But they're good call-takers and that ability might come two years from now for them to be able to take up, you know, the radio along with the call-taking. And so I certainly appreciate, you know, I appreciate the three of you allowing us to put this in and Roxanne, your work of, working it in there for us. Um, it really is no additional money. It's just an extra teeth in there so that, you know, as they promote to that call-taking level and they do all of their FEMA certification, they get five percent and when they go further down the road, they get the other five percent to be the radio operator. And it allows us to use them as staffing during critical times like now. Um, if we have to hold up their training for some reason and use them as a call taker and, you know, hold them up a couple weeks like we did a few weeks ago whenever we had a major staffing shortage. Um, we held a trainee up from continuing her training and kept her on the phones for two extra weeks. So that would've been an ideal for this position. She would've at least been paid a little extra for us holding her up, working toward her end goal of, of being signed off on the radio. So I, I appreciate you guys working with me on this.
And Beth, we wanna thank you for all the work you've put into analyzing the problem. I mean, in addition to working all the overtime and so forth, but analyzing the problem and bringing a proposal that both met the needs of the department and took into consideration the, the costs. The good news here, of course, is that these costs are reimbursed as part of our nine-one-one money that we get. But regardless, it gives, uh, people a sense of being able to move along a continuum of developing a career at nine-one-one. So thank you.
Yep, Beth, I wanna thank you too for you and your staff, the dedication you put through for the hours that needed to be manned. You alone, on one paid period, which was two weeks, uh, worked a hundred and fifty hours, you as the director. Uh, so make, make sure that those, those calls were received and everything was manned properly.
Um, I do, like I've said so many times, my staff is amazing. They're a dedicated bunch of people. And the only reason they're not there is if something truly happens that they can't be there. They're an amazing group of people and it's them. It's, they're the ones who make it, make it happen. So I just, I just help when I'm, I can and when I'm desperately needed and that's what Hutch and I do. So it's, it's the staff that's there every day that makes it work. So thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Beth. Um, which leads us to other departments that have, uh, come to the commissioners and asked for help. And we can't ignore it. From the last meeting that we've had, I think we've had thirty-some open positions that are not filled. And this puts a tremendous strain and stress on the employees in which those departments are, have vacancies. And we, as the commissioners, have to address this prior to any study. Okay, we, I know we wanna do the study. Uh, we wanna have comparables, but we're gonna have to take a shortcut here as well to, to, uh, man some of these departments and, uh, compare some pay. Or, or they're gonna be burned out and, and they're going to leave us. So, uh, it's something that we must do within, before the end of the year. And, uh, we will have a couple other, other departments that we will address this issue with. It is, it is frustrating because we have a labor shortage across the nation. Uh, we have many jobs that are opening and we aren't even receiving people that want to be interviewed. Or if they do call for an interview, they don't show up. Talked to one department head. He had six people scheduled for an interview and two showed up. So it, it is an issue and it's, it's plaguing the private and the public sector and it's a national problem.
The good news is that whatever we do in terms of making changes like this or in other departments trying to create career ladders, I, I talked to the employees at the Conservation District, which I think I've mentioned to you folks, about their feeling that there isn't really anywhere that they can go. But anything we do is gonna be part of, it will be factored into the study that we do. And in essence, we'll be sort of getting out a little ahead of the problem. There'll be other problems that we need to still try to resolve, but, um, and hopefully it'll make us more desirable as a place to come to work.
We took a tour of the industry here last week and during one of our workshops at the very end, uh, one of the individuals from the Department of Labor from the state gave us an alarming stat. And she stated, due to the baby boomers retiring, that we are now at the, uh, be able to fill the jobs that are available nationally. We, they are at the third grade level. So people that are in third grade, by the time they graduate, we would be able to fill the job market at that time. So we're basically a decade behind in, in bodies. And then if they go into college, that's another four years. So we could be more than a decade of people available to fill the job markets out there because of the labor shortage. And it's due to people passing away. It's due to people retiring, uh, people not having as many children as they used to. Baby boomers had five or six children. Nowadays, it's one point seven children. So these are all factors that, that feed into this national crisis. Okay, can, can I have a motion to accept these action items?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. For TDA actions.
TDA.
Yeah, TDA actions. Um, all fair side? Aye. Aye. Aye, so carry. Thank you. At this time, we recess the commissioners' meeting and, uh, adjourn the, convene the salary board.
Commissioners in the courts, we're asking to replace one full-time executive secretary, uh, pay grade five with two part-time executive secretaries, pay grade five, that are limited to a thousand hours annually. This for a period of November fourth, twenty twenty-one through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. In the courts, also to reclassify one court scheduler, pay grade six-seven, to a scheduling technician, pay grade five-six. Reclassify one clerk three, pay grade four, to a scheduling technician position, um, pay grade five-six. And to reclassify one clerk four, pay grade five, to an administrative specialist, pay grade five-six. In the Department of Public Safety Communications, to reclassify telecommunicators into the following new categories, effective October seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. New hires will be telecommunicator trainees at a pay grade six. They can advance then to a telecommunicator one, call taker, at a pay grade six. They can advance then to a telecommunicator two as a call taker and radio operator at a pay grade seven. And a telecommunicator, um, two supervisor right now then will be reclassified, reclassified as a telecommunicator three supervisor, pay grade eight.
Okay, I will motion the exception to salary board actions.
So moved.
Second. I'll second. All fair side? Aye. Aye. Aye, so carry. Word zero. Thank you. At this time, we adjourned to salary board actions and we reconvene the commissioners' public meeting. And, and if I can make one comment, uh, just a correction possibly. If I said we, we can no longer ignore the, what's happening with our departments, I did not mean ignore because we've been working on this for the whole year. You know, it's just put off. Yeah, delay. Delay. Yeah. Okay, thank you. And at this time, we're gonna recess the commissioners' meeting for the word of assessments revisions.
And Brooke Wright is on the line.
Good morning, Brooke.
Good morning, commissioners. This is Brooke Wright from the assessment office. Um, we, the real estate exemption for George England Awely that was tabled last week. My recommendation after speaking with the solicitor is micronations do not qualify underneath a real estate exemption. And the solicitor also agrees with me. So that is my recommendation to you is to deny this one.
Okay, we'll take these separate.
Okay.
Okay, so action or word of assessments revision six point one. Have a motion to reject.
Well, or do you wanna motion approve within the negative? Or you want a motion to reject?
Reject.
Okay. Yeah, I'm.
That be the correct way, solicitor?
Yes, it is because I, I believe it's a recommendation to deny.
That's my thought. Yep, thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
So I'll move to deny the exemption.
I'll second. All fair side? Aye. 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 Thank you. We'll move on to act, uh, board of assessments revision six point two.
Okay, this is a real estate refund for Thomas Dean's. His house was destroyed by fire on April ninth, twenty twenty-one. The refund amount is two hundred and seven dollars and nineteen cents. And I'm recommending that you approve the refund.
Okay, can I have the motion to accept the recommendation or approval of the refund? So moved.
I'll second it.
All fair side? Aye. Aye, so carry. Okay, thank you, Brooke. Anything else?
Nope, that's all I have. Thank you, commissioners.
You have a good day.
You too. Bye.
Thank you. We convene the commissioners' public meeting at this time.
Seven point zero personnel actions with Roxanne again.
Commissioners in Information Services, Cody A. Myers, has a full-time reclassification, um, fully qualified status as network engineer, pay grade nine, forty-four thousand four hundred eighty dollars and eleven cents annually. And this to be effective October seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. I'll take the next one separate.
Okay. Any discussion or comments? Yes, uh, having a long conversation with Jerry, the director. I just want Cody to know that we appreciate all the efforts that he's making over there and trying to, uh, advance in county government, especially in the IT, IS world. What's, what's Jerry calling is, uh, all, his superstar. Superstar. And, uh, I can say that it's not an easy field. Uh, what you learn in, in three months can be gone, you know, just as quickly. And, and, uh, you have to train and learn some other technique or new software. So Cody, uh, we appreciate your service here at the county and, and hope to keep you for a very long time. Okay, have a motion to accept.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. All fair side? Aye. Aye, so carry.
Commissioners, seven point two, we're asking you to vote on the personnel actions process in the month of September, twenty twenty-one.
Have a motion.
I'll move to accept.
I'll second. All fair side? Aye. Aye, so carry. Thank you, Roxanne.
Thank you.
Action items, um, we'll start with eight point one, Nancy Ackley, the vote on agreement for JPO City Mission.
This is a new contract with City Mission Living Stones down in Union Town, PA. Uh, we're looking for, again, more short-term detention centers. Uh, they have other programs, uh, not really many. Uh, there's Promise House, which is a residential, and then their, uh, Detention Center.
To Union Town, PA?
Yeah, we're in desperate need of them, so.
Okay, any questions or comments?
No, so this again is as needed. No, so this again is as needed, right? I think maybe the public sees every week you're here looking for detention centers. They might think we're lining up every youth.
Yeah, they're, they're short-term. We can either get them, we can get them into court, but we need to get them off the streets.
And sometimes places are full and you have to have a lot of different options and have contracts in place ahead of time so that you have those tools to be able to do it. If one place is full, you go to another place.
Yep, you just keep going down the list till we find one that has an opening.
Right.
It's good that you have that plan in place.
Try to.
Okay, have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
So carry. Anthony, thank you for being here. We look forward to joining your staff this afternoon and recognize them during Juvenile Justice Week. As we said in our prayer, they have a very tough job.
They do.
And we, we thank them for the service they've done for the county. Do a tremendous job and I see that with all the programming they do and helping give our juveniles. But some we look forward to joining this afternoon.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You too.
8.2, Jason York, the vote on agreement with Petro Choice. Jason?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Jason.
Commissioners, for your approval, 8.2, this is an agreement that we already have with Petro Choice. Petro Choice is the company that we purchase our grease and oils through for lubrications for all our equipment and trucks before. They've finally had a price increase to the point where we can no longer go without change. Petro Choice and our business department, Mr. Sims, worked out Petro had absorbed two price increases already this year and finally they came back to us and they said they can no longer absorb the price. They had to do an amendment. So fortunately for you for approval is an increase on several of the products that we use. I mean, this, again, it's an unneeded basis, but there's several key things that we use that the prices did blow up.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Carry on, do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye, so carry. Thank you, Jason.
8.3, Beth Baylor, voting on agreement with United Power Systems in the 17,400.
Morning, Commissioners. You have an agreement with, with United Power Systems. We had an agreement that we struck up earlier this year with Eaton. Eaton Power, that we have had that company for over 20 years. However, when it came time for service with Eaton this year, their service was poor. They, they did not honor parts of their contract. They kindly did honor them because I fought with them until they did. But they did not like the, the fact that I made them honor the contract and they, they voided their contract with us through Eaton, who we've used forever. So I have reached out to United Power, who is actually a servicer for Eaton, and, and did a contract with them covering the same item that Eaton covers for $4,100 less a year. And this contract is what you see in front of you. The Eaton contract has been voided and we were paying them monthly, so we lost no money. They serviced us up until the point that we ended the contract with them. So this is a new contract with a new company, United Power, but they were the in-between servicer for Eaton anyway. So we know their work and we know they're, they're good at it. So this services our parts and labor on five of our UPSs, our five main UPSs, and then it's the service for the tower sites as well on six other UPSs. So it's different layers of service on the, on the 11 different UPSs that we take care of.
Okay, and your Pennsylvania based company out of Whitehall, PA?
That is correct.
Sure, thank you. Any comments or questions? Motion accept.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, comments?
I have a couple comments.
You go ahead.
First of all, I, I want to thank you again, Commissioner, for the prayers that you take a lot of time to write and say during the reading.
Thank you.
And for sure, we need to be kind to each other. I had an experience over the weekend, you know, some lady got in my face. I wasn't wearing a mask outside and, you know, I don't need that. People don't need that. And I'm not going to make comments on masks. I see the pros and the cons. But there is one thing that I can tell you is that there is significant data out there right now that suggest you should be getting vaccinated. When we see the numbers from EVAN and we see the numbers from UPMC, and they are, the hospitalization rates are, are up. And there are some deaths, not like the first round, but, but regardless, those hospitals reporting that in the high 90s, like 97, 98% of the people that are admitted have not been vaccinated. Now, what they're telling us is, is supporting the fact that people that got vaccinated are not likely to go into the hospitals or be admitted. They're not likely to die. And, you know, and you can have your own opinions and it's, and I'm saying for adults, you know, I mean, especially if you're at risk or you have other issues. We've been to too many funerals where our friends have, have died. And, and the spouse is saying, well, I wanted him to get vaccinated or I wanted her to get vaccinated. And I don't know how, how long it's going to take that, that we come to the realization that if it does prevent people from dying or being hospitalized, then get it. I'm not saying this in regards to young children, even young adults, okay? I, you know, I'm, I'm not going there. I'm just talking about, you know, the peoples that, that are in their 40s, 50s, 60s and aren't up. So that's, that's a statistic we heard this morning at one of our meetings and I thought I'd share that with, with people.
Anything else, Commissioner?
Good.
Good, yeah.
So I got, the computer's up and running, so there's no public comments.
Okay, great. I believe we have one in the audience. Come up and please state your name and good to see you.
Good to see you all. Scott Miller, 822 Tucker Street, Williamsport. Life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. What do they mean when they say that? UPMC, a few years back, decided that if you use tobacco, you can no longer be employed by that. Now we have these vaccine mandates at the federal, state, local level, down to school boards, where if you don't get vaccinated, you can be terminated. That is infringement upon the individual's right. Myself, I wear a mask and I just took this off coming up here. I've been fully vaccinated, I got my card. But it's not my right to impose upon someone else. Like Commissioner Muster says, I would strongly suggest everybody that can get vaccinated, do. You know, it's your life though, you know, if you want to die. Personally, I think they should take away paying for you being in the hospital if you chose not to. If a person doesn't wear a helmet while motorcycle riding and you get injured and have a brain injury that would have been prevented by wearing a helmet, why should I have to pay for it? But this vaccine mandate, along with the tobacco thing, if you can be denied employment and terminated, you're denying a person the right to pursue happiness, the right, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. I think that's wrong, you know? Many years ago, in a country which I don't think I have to name, Jews were prohibited from working in government. Well, if we allow employers to do that, what's the next step? Some of y'all look like you're a little bit overweight. Why should I, as a taxpayer, have to pay for your health insurance because you don't exercise and eat less? You know, I mean, this is the threat. I hope people understand where I'm going with this. Because, you know, myself, I have never had an at-fault car accident. Why should I have to pay over $1,000 a year for car insurance when I have never had a car accident that I was at fault? I've been driving since I was 14. I had a day-use only driver's license. It's in farming states, in case y'all don't remember or know. You know, it's just ridiculous. And I feel that these vaccine mandates and loss of your pursuit of happiness is, is an egregious violation and should not be allowed. You know, I mean, it's just, we start going down that rabbit hole and how far do you go before you say no? Or how far do we go before people are sent to re-education camps? Not to say China, but, I don't know. I don't want to name names, but a couple of y'all look like y'all must have bad form. Have a wonderful day. Scott, you, you're right when you're talking about companies giving their employees an option. You either get vaccinated or you will be terminated. And I've had, I spoke with three people over the weekend and one last night who are very concerned about it. The guy's healthy, he's young, and he says, my, my immune system is there for me. And if I get it, I believe I'm going to be okay. He said, and I don't want this in my body. And I, I agree with him because if you get the vaccine, it doesn't stop you from transmitting it or, or getting it again. And, and those are arguments, legitimate arguments, that, that the youth and people that are healthy have. And I'm not saying if you're healthy with no other comorbidities, that you won't die, but the odds of that happening are slim to none, okay? And they, they are looking at government right now on, on the opposite side saying, what can we do? And matter of fact, all three are union workers. And all three belong to huge unions that will not back them. I, I don't under, I do not understand what's happening, but today there was 1,400 jobs lost nationally by one company because they, they wouldn't get it. Their deadline is somewhere towards the end of October. A decent-sized company here says, you, you get it or you lose your jobs. You know, I guess it's the, it's, it is the company's choice, you know? I don't think, you know, government should be intervening there, but they're also promoting this. The government's promoting these companies to terminate these people. I don't know what's happening in this country. I'm not going to say, I'm an expert at it. That's wrong. It's wrong. And especially for, for the healthy. Well, one thing I think about, I hope you don't mind me discussing this on camera so people can understand. Say I didn't want the vaccine. I was working for a business, a government agency, where I was mandated to have that vaccine. And I reluctantly, on the very last day, 11th hour of the 11th day, walked in and got that vaccine. And I happen to be that one in 100 million people that gets a blood clot, which some of these vaccines do cause. I get a blood clot and I'm disabled or I die. Is that employer going to compensate me or my survivors because I got a blood clot, because they required me to get a vaccine that caused the blood clot? I mean, at what point, you know, do you say, oh, I don't know? And I don't see any employer going, oh, God, you know, you got the vaccine, had a blood clot and, you know, had a massive stroke and now you're just a vegetable, you know, hooked up to a machine. We're dropping your insurance, let the government take it over. And we don't care if your wife and kid lose their house or their means of support. Goodbye. Thank you. Thanks, Scott. I get brought up a good.
What's unfortunate is this has become political and it shouldn't become political. It comes down to a personal choice of an individual. They should consult with their physician, their medical provider. They should make their own decision. Should, in my opinion, should not be mandated by an employer. We're losing good people, teachers. A year ago, our hospital workers were, were heroes. Now they're, they're villains if they don't get the vaccine and they lose their job. We need those people in those positions. Chicago's going to lose 7,000 police officers. I mean, it's insane what's going on across the country because if a person decides they don't want to get the shot for whatever reason, they're going to lose their job. That should not happen in America.
Will congressmen lose their job?
No.
No. Will the postmaster, people working in the post office? No. What, what, what's going on? I don't understand that.
You can't pick, you, you, you make, so all federal workers have to get it, but the post office doesn't and Congress doesn't? I mean, you can't pick winners and losers here.
Well, y'all mentioned about how the county, you know, here locally, people, y'all have positions that you can't fill. There's just nobody coming in to do it.
Why exacerbate that condition by making a mandatory condition on somebody? You know, it comes down to where that person should, we encourage it. It makes sense, but it comes down to that person talking to their doctor, their medical provider, making up their own mind. And, and that's just how I feel about it. I, I, you know, I think it should definitely be there with, with people that have issues, with medical issues. And, but it comes down to where that person should have the right. They shouldn't be shoved down their throat in the threat of losing their job. That's just wrong. That should not happen in this country.
Part of the reason I bring this to y'all is too infrequently, maybe it's just because of the media coverage, I don't see anybody in government legislation standing up for those rights. The United States is a republic. We're not a true democracy. Two of y'all can't vote to take away the third's rights. Everybody has rights. And if we allow legislation to be passed, whether actively or by lack of action, to allow these types of things, where does it stop? You know, are we going to have stormtroopers in front of shops saying, no, don't go in there if he hasn't been vaccinated? You know, and I realize I'm making an absurd, compologic thing, but where does it stop? You know, did anybody in 1933 think there would be a holocaust? You know, you know, you start down those paths and when nobody speaks up, we all lose. Thanks, thank you, Scott, thank you.
So the, the complication here, you know, I'm thinking back to during the pandemic when we had meatpacking plants that had to be shut down, when we had large employers and small employers who couldn't run their facility because the entire workforce was getting infected with COVID, so.
But they didn't have the vaccines then either.
No, no, I understand that. I understand that. That's exactly right. That's, that's the point I'm, I'm getting to is that we often hear about all the rights we have, you know? And I often look at how we as a country are moving these of the other countries in the world. And, you know, you have extremes where in China during the pandemic, they literally locked up apartment buildings. People were not, you know, they locked down cities, right? At the same time, they were able to move out of the pandemic at a very, very quick rate and they were able to get their economy moving, which means that they were able to feed people and keep people going. So the question is, we talk often about our rights. We also have responsibilities. We have responsibilities to a family, to a community, to our country. And I think that when you're in a crisis like this, you sometimes have to say, okay, yeah, my right may be infringed, but is the infringement of my right being done for the better good? I'm worried about this county. We're 48% vaccinated, whereas I think the statewide, we're 68%. You know, if an, if an employer is faced with a choice... You know, if an employer is faced with a choice, think about a healthcare facility. I go to the hospital to get knee surgery, or to some other elective surgery, or, God forbid, I'm taken there by ambulance. And I don't even realize that the person who's handling me has never been vaccinated. I have an immune compromised, you know, system. Then maybe I don't even know that I'm immune compromised at the time. Or I have a child who I do know is immune compromised, a child who may or may not have a disability, but a child who has some compromised immune system. And I take them to school, and the other kids don't realize they're carrying the virus. So I think that, yeah, we can focus on our rights all the time, but if we don't look at also what our responsibilities are, we're going to deteriorate as a country. And we'll sort of be like the country that spirals downward, saying, I have rights, I have rights. And I, you know, I think it harkens back to what we do when we raise our kids. We tell our kids, yeah, you have the right to stay out late, or you have the right, later than usual, you have the right to do this, but you have a responsibility to make sure that you get your work done, your chores done. It sounds simplistic, but I think it applies to what we do. I think that part of all of us back and forth on this rights and everything makes the people who aren't vaccinated say, you know.
No, it's, listen, it's political. There's some.
I don't think it's political. I think it's, I mean, imagine you own a meatpacking plant.
Go back to the election. Go back to the election, where everyone on the other side was saying, I will not get this vaccine. It's not tested, it's too fast. And they were on the other side.
The president and the vice president said it. They said.
Well, I don't know.
That's the mixed message.
The current president and the vice president said that last summer.
We don't know.
Well, so then at a certain point, we all have to move beyond what's considered political. I guess what I'm trying to say to you is that, listen, there are lots of things employers do that people aren't happy with. You know, when you walk into your employment, you lose all your rights, except for the right to be discriminated against. If you don't have a union, you have no rights.
But you put something in your body.
You have a union.
That's different. That's different.
No, no, you have a union.
When an employer is mandated to put something into someone's body, does that cross the line without that employee's permission? And at the threat of losing their job?
Yeah, I know. It sounds harsh, but what do you do if you infect an entire meat processing? That's what happens.
I understand.
When we had that pandemic, right, I remember reading articles in the paper about
I understand that.
Businesses that basically, forget about even losing the money. They couldn't function. So somehow we have to try to strike a balance.
You can't, you can't, as a federal president, say, you're federal workers, you can do this, but the people that work on Capitol Hill don't have to. That sends a mixed message.
Was there any other comments?
Yeah, is there any other comments?
No. Because he, you know, responded to me, can I have just a moment of response? Myself, you know, when they came out with these stimulus checks, the six hundred, the twelve hundred, et cetera, et cetera, I said, they shouldn't call it a stimulus check. They should call it, wear a damn mask check. And even if you can't wear a cloth mask like this, you could have gotten one of those clear face shields. That wouldn't have impeded your breathing. And because they called it a stimulus check, you know, those people that didn't want to wear a mask, if you said, do you want your two thousand dollars or not, I guarantee you ninety percent of them said, give me my check.
Thank you, Scott. Thanks for being here.
Sorry to bring all these things to y'all, but I think it's something that needs to be discussed locally.
There isn't necessarily a right or a wrong here. There's just different perspectives. But we have to think about the consequences of what happens, you know, when we do or don't do something. That's all. And.
I agree. With the greatest personal freedoms come the greatest personal responsibilities.
I think that if you said to your employer, I have a religious or I have a medical condition preventing me from getting the vaccine, I think it's going to be difficult for the employer to terminate you on that basis, because there are other parts of our constitution. Now, if everybody all of a sudden has the same medical and religious.
It's a good idea, Commissioner.
Okay, our meeting's adjourned. We've completed our agenda, and we'll meet back on October the twelfth at ten a.m. Thank you, everybody. Have a great day and good week.
So can we legislate a way stupidity?
Well, let's just let people decide.
Oh, I do. I wish no ill will on anyone.
Pass away, you know? I think of the many from Southside who come to our meeting. Right?
Yeah. I've lost, you know, I've lost people, so, you know.
I hear you.
Luckily, no direct family because of COVID, but.
Any questions?
You got it.
This is just a gun to my head kind of thing.
They're looking at it.
No, I'm just discussing with my pair.
Well, they're also looking at the correlation.
Okay. And we have a pattern on one. I was.
Get a correlation.
But I just.
That sounds good.
Yep, they're on.
It's pretty much. I got it done.
The other thing we need to say is, when did rate increases take effect?
Everybody comments how.
One in a.
Listen to this side. This particular person, I think, is a friend of the state.
I'll give you a call later.
Yeah, just sometime. Appreciate it, appreciate it.
Yep, thank you, Larry.
Yes, sir.
So all these positions that you keep filling are end of hard time as a person with COPD. I'm learning to just.
You do?
Absolutely. Are you?
Well, you have to go down to the list and see. Check the table for each article.
Is it through lycos dot word?
Yes. Hey, how are you?
Yes, I will see you for a slap of the jaw. Here, of course. But I could not do what I saw you doing that one time with the car wash.